The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation will be given by Larry Goodwin, pastor of Refuge Church of Denison.
Would you pray with me? Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the beauty of who you are and what you represent here in our community. We thank you for diligent and worthy leaders that lead our city. We thank you for the freedom, God, to meet, to discuss, to debate, and yes, to even disagree from time to time. We thank you for all those things and we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your grace, we ask for your favor in our decisions and over our community and the direction as we move forward into the future that we know you have planned for us. Father, I pray that every leader in our city, every person in our community would be a reflection of your love and your character, not to just some, but to all who make up Denison and who make up this great community. And may peace rule and reign in our hearts and minds as we pursue and do what you have purpose for us to do. And we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight, we have with us Natalie Jamison, who is the executive director of CASA and some of her staff. And Natalie, each year, we get the opportunity to issue a number of proclamations, but I would dare to say that there is none that's more important than this one. There is never a case where a child should be abused or neglected. So if reading this proclamation raises that awareness, then the most important thing we do tonight is to read this proclamation. So councilmember Gess and I are going to come down to the podium. If you'll meet us, we'll read this proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Denison, Texas, whereas there were sixty-six thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-two confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect in Texas during the fiscal year of 2018, and five hundred and nine confirmed victims in Grayson County. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, children's advocacy centers, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in safe nurturing environments, as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of child abuse victims. And now therefore I, Janet Gott, as mayor, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in Denison, Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect and to significantly improve the response of community when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Denison to be affixed on this, the first day of April 2019. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor. Natalie? We cannot begin to express our appreciation for the work that you do to protect our children.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My staff here today, if you would all stand to be recognized, these, this staff here, they're great people. They do a lot of hard work for very little money for a nonprofit. And I just want to recognize their job. And if you can, the blue ribbon, if you will seek out the blue ribbon. What this stands for is a young man in 1989 was murdered, and his grandmother, she has a blue ribbon on her antenna to remind herself that he was murdered and he's gone and his name was Bubba. And we all know of Bubba somewhere in our past. I know my brother was named Bubba. So just remember during the month of April, pick up a blue ribbon. Remember Bubba and all the other 500 kids who could have been of Bubba that we were working with to make sure that he go back to his safe home. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to say real quick, as a member of the CASA board, these ladies go above and beyond their favor for your health and ensure the safety of your kids. So great pride today.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. My pleasure. I think that's outstanding, huh?
We love you, Racy. Big arms.
At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Chris Wallantine. She has a special introduction to make.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm excited tonight to introduce our city marshal. I know you all saw in the weekly report his credentials, but I wanted to repeat them because they're pretty impressive. Seventeen years in law enforcement, with the last seven as a city marshal for the city of Capel. Bachelor's degree from Northwestern State, master's degree in public administration from Arkansas State, master's degree in criminal justice administration from the University of Louisiana at Monroe. He holds a master's peace officer license. He is court security specialist certified, which required a 40-hour training session. He is also the mayor pro tem on the Providence Village Town Council where he resides. He also serves as region one director for the State of Texas Marshals Association, which position he has held for the past three years. So we are very excited to have him here. He's a wonderful candidate to get this city marshal's office up and running. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Eric Newton.
I wouldn't expect them to say anything tonight. Today has been a crazy whirlwind of a day, just trying to get used to the new surroundings. Like I said, the previous almost seven years I've been in Capel doing marshal duty, so it's starting from the ground up here. I'm ready to hit the ground, hit it hard, get the warrants in region, and start clearing some warrants. It's not all about busting heads, so I don't want y'all to think that because of my excitement. There is going to be, you know, there's a human side to the being a marshal and trying to get compliance, you know, the best way we can. So that's what, you know, when first thing I met Chris, we discussed that. So I'm ready to, ready to get it going, get some of these warrants cleared up and, you know, just people need to take care of certain things and that's what I'm here for, is to kind of help give that push to go ahead and get it taken care of.
Well, we're glad to have you aboard, Eric.
Thank you.
So go to work.
I will. Thank you.
Tonight, we have with us some very special guests from Abilene, Kansas, the boyhood home of Dwight D. Eisenhower. Denison and Abilene share a love for the history of our 34th president. Denison gets to claim his birth, but Abilene has bragging rights to his boyhood. So together, we can share him with the world. So with us are our friends, Mayor Tom Schaper, Austin Gilli, city manager, and I did say Austin Gilli. He sounds like he belongs in Texas, doesn't he? And Julie Roller, the CBB director. Last fall, some of us had the opportunity to go to Abilene, and these folks were wonderful hosts. So let's take a chance and let's really wow them and let's give them a real Denison welcome. So we have a proclamation to read related to our friendship and our shared history. So I'm going to ask our guests to join us on the dais, and we're going to read that proclamation, and then we're going to get a picture with you and all the council, not just with me. Just come on up. Now, our resident historian is, is responsible for this proclamation, so if I run out of breath before I get it read, it's all John's fault, so. Proclamation, whereas the histories of Abilene, Kansas and Denison, Texas are woven with many common threads, beginning with Kansas businessman Joseph McCoy, who in the late 1860s encouraged Texas cattlemen to drive their cattle north through the Denison area toward Abilene. And whereas after the founding of Denison and the arrival of the Katy Railroad in 1872, Joseph McCoy moved to Denison and established the Atlantic and Texas Refrigerating Company to facilitate getting Texas cattle to market. And whereas railroad connections also brought from Abilene David and Ida Eisenhower, who on October the 14th, 1890, welcomed their third son Dwight D. Eisenhower to a small frame home in East Denison. The Eisenhower family later returned to Abilene in 1892. And whereas Dwight D. Eisenhower returned to Texas in 1915 for his first military assignment and met Mamie Dowd, who later became his wife. And whereas General Eisenhower's appointment to command troops during World War II awakened pride in the residents of Abilene and Denison, with each community dedicating museums at his birthplace and his boyhood home to celebrate his legacy. Later, both communities welcomed Eisenhower during the 1952 campaign and celebrated his election as 34th President of the United States. And whereas the cities of Abilene and Denison continue to honor and celebrate Eisenhower's legacy by supporting the creation of the Eisenhower Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas the cities of Abilene and Denison are planning, along with Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, a community trip to Washington in 2020 to participate in the dedication of the Eisenhower Memorial. And whereas today, April the 1st, 2019, a delegation of officials from Abilene, Kansas, joined Denison to celebrate our interwoven history, passion for Eisenhower, and community friendship. Now therefore I, Janet Gott, mayor of the City of Denison, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim our appreciation for the partnership we have with Abilene, Kansas, and urge citizens of Denison and Abilene to work together to celebrate Eisenhower's legacy and share his story with future generations of our community and the world. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Denison, Texas, on this, the first day of April 2019. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Gott, and entire commission, council, Texas. We appreciate the warm welcome and five-star hospitality. We look forward to a long and prosperous partnership in our celebrating Eisenhower and cross-promoting our communities. We are excited about our upcoming trip to Washington, DC next year, and we would like to present you with this spring proclamation celebrating this legacy.
Oh my, my goodness, we were supposed to be doing the presenting. Wow, thank you. That is beautiful. No, I'll hold it while we have the picture. So if everybody can get it, we'll all get a picture with our friends from Abilene.
Don't push the chair too far.
Okay, Donna, is it a good one? It looks good. You're going to come up a little closer. This is... There, that's much better. Okay.
Michael, do you want to...
Michael, you want to wait on you? Okay, Racy, one more. All right. Yes, he is. Thank you so much. We have a lot on our agenda tonight. And before we get to that, I have one more special thing we need to do. Tonight, we are privileged to present the Moving Forward Giving Back Award to one of our community's most extraordinary citizens. This award is not given often, and it's not given lightly. And it is designed to recognize those who truly give back and make a difference in every aspect of their life. There is an old adage, "If you want a job done well, give it to a busy person." Truly, there seems to be no end to the energy and commitment to our community of this recipient. It is one thing to serve, but it is yet another to be actively engaged in serving. And he does this as a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board, the Main Street Advisory Board, the Denison Main Street, Inc. You might say we can find his fingerprints all over the city. As chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, he ensures that we protect and preserve what makes us unique. His knowledge of historic preservation is unprecedented. He helps develop future leaders of our community and our nation through his work with the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 605. He teaches them by modeling the values by which he lives. In 2012, he came to our community as the Eisenhower Birthplace Site Manager. He has taken the birthplace to a whole new level of excellence. He is a professional historian who values the treasure with which he has been entrusted. His love of the history of our 34th president is absolutely contagious, and he is taking the birthplace in a direction that gives us all a sense of pride of ownership. He understands the importance of shared relationships with other Eisenhower legacy sites and began building this relationship in 2012 when our community made their first trip to Abilene, Kansas. That relationship is further evidenced by the visit from our friends tonight. He understands the value of volunteers, because without the volunteer effort to purchase the birthplace so long ago, we might have lost this treasure forever. So each year in April, during National Volunteer Month, he hosts a big Texas breakfast at the birthplace to recognize those who play such a vital role in our community. You might say it's the volunteer extraordinaire serving the other volunteers. Each year, he plans and hosts a great birthday celebration honoring our 34th president, and he turns it into a wonderful community affair. No matter the need, wherever he can contribute in our community, he willingly answers the call. You might say he's always there to connect the dots. Whatever we need to know, whatever we need done, when no one else is available, when it just needs to get finished, John is there to make it happen, more often than not without being asked. John Akers, you make our city better, and we are so proud to call you a Denisonian. So will you allow us to honor your extraordinary contributions to our, our community by presenting you with this Moving Forward Giving Back Award? John, I know of no one who deserves this one. And I tried my very best to get your family here, but you just would not go up the front. And I think it's very fitting that our friends from Abilene are here to see you being remembered.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
You're very welcome. And thank you, John. Thank you for all those things I said earlier, things that are just about you. So thank you for being here.
Good work.
Michael, are you finished? Now, 22 minutes later, we can get down to business. If I can find my agenda. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There is a, a motion and a second, motion by councilmember Beck and a second by councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from local retail to single family located at 300 East Hull Street. Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, mayor and council. Do we have a clicker?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is case number 2019-009Z. As you mentioned, the request is to change the zoning of the property from local retail to single-family five. It's important to note that the residential infill overlay also applies to this property. That's the overlay that reduces some of our standards, no brick, no garage, et cetera. Construction of the homes is currently underway, and the future land use plan in our 2018 comprehensive plan designates this area as neighborhood, which single-family homes are appropriate in that area. Staff recommends approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the request. I have a few photos to go through. This is the subject property. This is the southeast corner of Hull Street and Crockett. There are two lots here. The surrounding zoning is local retail, but as we mentioned, this is in that overlay area where we want to encourage residential development, and the future land use plan also recommends this area, designates this area as neighborhood, which is appropriate for a variety of uses, mostly residential, but also some small neighborhood service and retail uses. This is the property. I may have undersold it a little bit when I said construction was underway. And this was about a month ago, so they're pretty close. So these are the lots. This is looking west on Hull Street. This is east on Hull Street. As you can see, there are, of course, homes adjacent to and in close proximity to the proposed rezoned site. And as I mentioned, staff is recommending approval of the request. This is a public hearing item.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance change in the zoning of the subject property from local retail to single-family five, lots seven and eight, block 17, JP Dumas Edition, located at 300 East Hull Street.
Second.
There is a motion by councilmember Beck and a second by councilmember Gess. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from commercial to light industrial and local retail located at 2212 West Morton Street. Mr. Dawson.
Thank you. This is case 2019-014Z. I'll go to the actual maps first. So the subject property, the frontage of the property is located along Morton Street. However, the bulk of the request to rezone to rezone is, to rezone to light industrial is actually located off of Morton Street. The initial request was for the entire property outlined in blue here to be rezoned to light industrial. However, with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the consent of the applicant, the request is now to leave the frontage portion and change a small portion of the frontage to be local retail. That would allow for some additional development to be located along Morton Street with the light industrial zoning pulled back from the street, not giving it really any actual street frontage. The proposal on the property, of course, is the rezone. The applicant has indicated that the, the request is before you as a, this, the zoning district they have to get in order to construct a new animal shelter with some outdoor kennels. It's only allowed in the light industrial zoning district, so that was the district they wanted, they needed to request. The applicant has submitted a site plan. This is for informational purposes only, and it got stretched a little bit, but as you can see, the frontage of the property will remain undeveloped this time. They mainly purchased that in order to give themselves access to the rear property. The shelter itself would be constructed on the rear of the property, would allow for a walking track to be completed, a fenced area for the animals and ample parking and everything else they might need. Of course, this is informational only, but we did want to present that to you as part of this. This would go through a plating process and a site plan process for approval prior to any construction. Staff is recommending approval of this request. The future land use plan shows this area as being mixed commercial and also as being what we call a revitalization area, which encourages redevelopment and reuse of properties or new development, as in the case of this property. So with that, staff is recommending approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of this request with that small change to local retail on the front. I believe the applicant is present if there are any questions for them, and staff is here to answer any questions, and this is a public hearing item.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
I'm here to answer questions for this agenda item. Do I need to come forward?
Please. State your name and, and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephanie Phillips. My address is 3923 Park Avenue in Denison.
Council have any questions for Ms. Phillips?
Easy.
A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance change in the zoning of the subject property from commercial to light industrial and local retail.
Second.
We need to close the public hearing first.
Close the hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. There being none, this public hearing is closed. Now, are there any questions from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from commercial to light industrial and local retail.
Second.
There's a motion by councilmember Beck, a second by councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the 2017-2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, presented by Brooks, Watson &amp; Company. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Municipalities are required to have an annual audit of all funds. Brooks, Watson &amp; Company has been contracted to perform those services for the City of Dennison. In conjunction with the City of Dennison Accounting Division, which are here, and we're very proud of them, a comprehensive annual financial report is prepared, which provides a far greater amount of information for the public to utilize. This report allows us to apply for the Government Finance Officers Association Award of Excellence in Financial Reporting. We've received this award the last seven years and are hopeful we will receive the award this year as well. Louis Brie Love is here. He's with Brooks, Watson &amp; Company, and he's going to present a review of the audit of the CAFR for you this evening.
Good evening, Council. I am Louis Brie Love, Audit Manager for Brooks, Watson, and I've had the pleasure of working with the city for the audit. In front of you, you have a few items. You have a bound copy of the CAFR, as well as three attachments within the front cover, two of which are letters, and one is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, which I believe is on here. Yes. Okay. So, first, I'd like to walk you through just a quick overview of the audit process. So, the audit is performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We perform an assessment where we evaluate, examine processes and controls. And when we do that, we're sitting down with each department, specifically anywhere money will be coming in. And we're walking through the controls that are in place. We're looking at making any recommendations to help strengthen the controls that are already there and disevaluating those areas. We also do what's called a risk-based approach, where the audit process, where we identify potential areas of risk for any misappropriation of funds and areas where, such as revenues and related expenditures, construction in progress, payroll expenditures, and long-term liabilities. Next, we move into compliance testing. We perform testing over the city's compliance with provisions with laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, and including such compliance with, such as the Public Funds Investment Act or PFIA. We move into field work. We're tying out the balance sheet, confirming those with as many third parties as possible. And as we're, as we're tying that balance sheet down, we're testing the income statement to ensure that the financials are materially accurate. And next, we would move into the conclusion reporting phase, where we evaluate the results of the audit and then help prepare the report. This is a comprehensive annual financial report, or a CAFR, which is above and beyond the standard reporting requirements. This allows for additional level of transparency. And as Renee said, this is, has been seven consecutive years that the city has received the award. The CAFR does have, the letter of transmittal contains the auditor's opinion, the management's discussion and analysis, or the MDNA, your basic financial statements, which contain your government-wide statements, your fund-level statements, and then notes to the financial statements. And then you have your required supplementary information, followed by your statistical section. For the independent auditor's report, there are four possible outcomes. You have unmodified, modified, disclaimed, and adverse. And the city did receive an unmodified opinion, and this is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. So, that's what we want to see. Next, this is a summary of the city's revenues for governmental activities. Total governmental revenues for the 2018 is, were 29.2 million. And this was up by just over 2 million from the previous year. A few financial highlights for this section. Intergovernmental revenues increased by 595,000, due primarily to contributions received for THF Park. Fines and forfeitures increased primarily due to 114,000 more in federal forfeiture revenue received the current year. Investment income increased by 58,000 due to utilization of interest-bearing accounts. And then other revenues decreased by 244,000. This is primarily due to some non-recurring fee and reimbursements received in the prior year. Next is a summary of the city expenditures for governmental funds. 2018 expenditures were 44.6 million. This is up by 11.7 million from the previous year. Some key highlights are general government expenditures increased by 2.9 million, primarily due to the new city hall and related capital costs. Cultural recreation expenditures increased by 8.1 million, primarily due to a capital cost for THF Park projects. And then changes in debt services are in line with the, are up, but in line with bond issuance and corresponding service schedules. Next is a summary of your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. I'd like to draw your attention down to the line item that says net change in fund balance. Here, you'll see that the general fund had a increase of 23,000. That the general bond fund had a decrease of 11.2 million. And that other non-major governmental's had a decrease of 362,000. Now, all of these are in line with the adopted budget for the year. Unassigned fund balance for the general fund was 7.1 million, or 27% of total general fund expenditures. And GFOA has a minimum recommendation of two months, or 16.7%. So, you, you far exceed that, that recommendation. And so, you guys are in good shape there. Next is the summary of the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, or your budget to actual. If you look to the far-right column, it shows the variance between the final budget as well as your actual. Revenues had 346,000 more than budgeted. Expenditures came in under by 1.2 million, and with a total net change in fund, or a total variance analysis of 2.1 million. So, assuming you were able to accomplish everything you sought to accomplish during the year, this is a sign of a very healthy fiscal year. Next is the summary of your statement, revenues, expenditures, and changes in net position for your proprietary funds. So, what we look for here is to make sure that the fund is self-sustaining. Operating income for the year was 3.8 million. And after transfers, it still had a remaining positive net change in fund bound, of net position of 1.3 million. So, the fund is healthy and is self-sustaining. Next, I point you to the other letters that are included. One that, which contains any journal entries that were recommended as part of the audit, as well as any recommendations as part of our review of controls. And with that, I'll open up for any questions.
Questions from council? Motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept the 2017-2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report presented by Brooks, Watson &amp; Company.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Renee, thank you, and your staff, for an extraordinary job again.
Very good.
And I do want to add to that. It's a pleasure working with Renee and Lori and their team. They are so quick to respond, and they take their job very seriously, take a lot of pride in their work. So, you guys have a very great finance team here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, consider and act upon adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Dennison Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2019, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said certificates, approving the official statement, providing an effective date, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Ms. Wagner.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council members again. We are now in our fifth year of our capital improvement projects plan for water sewer projects. Council approved a five-year water sewer rate increase on September 8th, 2014, that would support this five-year plan. Funding this year would be used for NTRA elevated tank, water lines on Teresa and West Loy Lake, water and sewer improvements, distribution and collection, and Parkdale Elevated Tower. Marty Shue with Hilltop Securities is here to discuss the pricing, the very favorable pricing that we received today on these bonds that we're asking you to pass the ordinance on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marty Shue with Hilltop Securities. We represent the city as your financial advisor. So, we prepared one booklet to go over both of your agenda items, so we'll just focus on the certificates to start with. There are two series of bonds that you're actually going to be authorizing and approving tonight. So, starting with that, behind, right behind the first cover, we included some bid results. The second page is actually going to be the certificates of obligation. So, your bonds, both series of bonds, were sold through a competitive sale. And essentially, what that means is your bonds were put out on the open market, and any and all underwriters were invited to submit a bid for the right to purchase and sell your bonds out to the public with the intent that the lowest bid wins. On your COs, you did receive seven different bids, and Raymond James and Associates came in with the winning proposed true interest cost of a 2.865%. Just to give you an idea of a successful sale, we usually look for a minimum of three bids. And that's what we would consider successful. So, seven bids is great. And usually, these firms are often represented. There's a bunch of other firms that are typically bidding as part of a syndicate with them. So, you probably had about three times as many participating firms as what you're, in addition to what you're seeing here. And most significantly, behind tab A, we have graphed that interest rate against a bond buyer's index. Bond buyer's index is a third-party index that is released and used to track municipal market conditions over time. They release a weekly rate, and right now, their current weekly rate is at 3.79%. And as you can see, your bonds actually came in well below that with a 2.86%. But I think most significantly, we've also included on this graph that, that is just six basis points, or .06, above the 20-year historical low, which was a 2.8%. And that was in 2016. So, congratulations. That's a very, very favorable result. Tab one includes numbers on the refunding. We'll go over those on your, on your next agenda item. But tab two includes the full set of numbers on the certificates of obligation, so you can see what that interest rate translates to in dollars over the life of the bonds. The bonds will be, you'll be making fixed annual payments for 20 years. Ultimately, that translates to about 2.2 million dollars of interest over the life of the bonds. There'll be semi-annual payments, annual principal payments. And as part of the normal bond issuance process, the city did have to apply for and purchase a bond rating. So, staff did sit down with both Standard and Poor's and Fitch, and they provided a lot of information, answered a lot of questions for them so that they could conduct a full credit assessment on the city. They did release two reports in connection with this issuance, and we've included the full reports behind the last tab for you. And part of these favorable results are directly attributable to these positive credit ratings. So, both Standard and Poor's did affirm the double A minus credit rating of the city, and Fitch did affirm the double A credit rating. Both reports highlight the strong budgetary flexibility, liquidity, strong budgetary performance, and of course, the strong management of the city. So, I encourage you to read those full write-ups. The credit rating of the city is just like you or my, our own personal credit rating. The higher the credit rating, the lower the cost of borrowing when we go to buy a house or a car. Same thing when the city comes to market with its bonds, the better rates you receive, the higher your credit rating. So, all in all, we think you should be very pleased by approving and adopting the ordinance tonight. It's the final step of the bond issuance process. Thereafter, the bonds will go to the Attorney General for formal review, and you will actually receive the funds to pocket on May 1st. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of City of Dennison, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2019, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said certificates, approving the official statement, providing an effective date, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Guest. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, consider and act upon adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Dennison, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2019, to refund outstanding obligations issued for various public improvements and to pay cost of issuance, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, approving the official statement, providing an effective date, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These bonds were originally issued in 2008 for 5,145,000. At the time, when I put this agenda item together, there was a potential savings of 375,000 over a 10-year period. The actual net PV savings is 388,000. And I'm sure Marty will talk about the savings over each year period. The proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used for refunding a portion, and that's like refinancing. A portion of the city's outstanding debt for debt service savings and legal fiscal design and engineering fees in connection with such projects. Refunding is the process of retiring or redeeming an outstanding bond issue at maturity by using the proceeds from a new debt issue. The new issue is almost always issued at a lower rate of interest than the refunded issue, ensuring significant reduction in interest expense for the issuer. And Marty will come up and share with you the pricing that we received on these bonds as well today.
Thank you, Marty Shue, Hilltop Securities, again. And that was a fantastic summary of what this transaction is. Again, just older, higher-interest-rate debt being replaced by newer, lower-interest-rate debt. Same as with your certificates of obligation, these were sold through a competitive sale. So, again, they were put out on the market. Any and all underwriters could bid for the right to purchase and sell those to the market. Behind the tab, the first cover, the first page represents the bids that you received. Again, the city did receive seven different bids. This time, BOK Financial Securities came in with the proposed true interest cost of a 1.92%. And the reason you're seeing a difference in the rates there is just really in relation to the amortization schedule. So, your certificates of obligation were just longer. They're a 20-year issue, so they had a slightly higher rate. Your, your general obligation refunding bonds are 10 years, so hence why you're seeing a lower rate. But again, still a fantastic rate. Translates to lots of great savings, as Ms. Wagner already mentioned. Right behind tab one, we've included the full set of numbers, so you can actually see the total net savings to the city is 432,414 dollars. That translates to about $43,000 of annual savings. Ms. Wagner mentioned the present value savings of that translates to 388,000 roughly, or 11.67% PV savings. And just by way of benchmark, we don't typically start recommending refunding proposals for savings until they hit a minimum 3% PV threshold. So, as you can see, at 11%, you're well above that. So, congratulations yet again on another successful sale. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of City of Dennison, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2019, to refund outstanding obligations issued for various public improvements and to pay cost of issuing, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, approving the official statement, providing an effective date, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Greenleaf, a second from Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Renee, thank you again. We always like the idea of saving money. I know you do. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter. under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Confer with attorney and discuss pending litigation regarding 715 West Sears. Confer with attorney and discuss pending litigation regarding Strategic Fundraising Solutions LLC versus City of Dennison. The time is 6:50, and we are now in executive session.